Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Waukesha, to the Joint Plan Commission and Town Board meeting on September 12th, 2019. We're beginning at 6:30 PM. So we are officially called to order. I believe we've got some special guests in the house tonight from Boy Scout Troop 63, if I've got that correct. That meets at Rose Glenn Elementary School, and they volunteered. I'm not sure how many are coming, but come one, come all. They're going to lead us and pledge allegiance. If you would, you need to come up to the microphone here. Pull that thing down maybe a little bit, get it real close. And we're gonna all stand up. When everybody's standing up, you can lead us, okay? Go ahead when you're ready. Get real close to that microphone, real close.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. A roll call will do that in two parts. Plan Commission first, followed by Town Board. Kathy?
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Sizney?
Here.
Commissioner Fuller?
Here.
Town Chairman Fisher?
Here.
Supervisor German?
Here.
Supervisor Dur?
Here.
Supervisor Stigler?
Here.
Supervisor Radke?
Here.
Okay, we've got them all, thank you. Item four, we need confirmation from Clerk Treasurer Nicholas that we've complied with statutes with regarding to open meeting laws, posting of the meeting, et cetera?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go to item five, which will be Citizens' Comments. Anyone who would like to address the Board, you're welcome to come forward. Name and address, please, and up close and personal to the microphone.
Good evening. Sandy Ham, west 230, south 3827, Milky Way Road. A quick item on the agenda that I just was wondering about at the bottom of the one page, it says, as item 12, adjournment of the Plan Commission. And yet, when I turned it over, item 13 says that we're gonna be meeting with the Plan Commission, so that was just confusing. And I'll just go on record again that I'm not interested in converting agricultural land to housing. And we're gonna have a hearing on that, I guess. And then item 11 is the conditional comprehensive land use plan. I don't know if it was the last time we addressed this, but one time recently, one of the Plan Commission members made a motion to leave the plan, the land use plan the way it was, and shortly thereafter, that individual was no longer on the Plan Commission. So, you know, I'm not interested in having the plan changed, and I know that we heard maybe a month ago that it was to provide the town with more flexibility. For me, it provides the developers with more flexibility, not the residents. Thank you very much.
Inasmuch as Mr. Ham raised the issue about the agenda, I'll respond to that. At this point in time, we're actually gonna flip item 13A, Business, around with item 12, the adjournment of the Plan Commission, and item 13A, which is the public hearing for the sanitary district, which is being created, actually does not involve the Plan Commission, that's only for the Town Board, but we're gonna ask Plan Commissioners just to hang tight and sit through that, if you would, as long as it was put that way onto the agenda. So the adjournment of the Plan Commission will take place after we address item 13A. Who else would like to address the Plan Commission and Town Board under Citizens' Comments? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we won't belabor that. We'll move on. Item six is the minutes of August 8th, 2019. That was a joint Plan Commission and Town Board meeting. On the agenda, we have item A is discussion of those minutes, and then we would take separate votes and possible action to approve them by the Plan Commission and the Town Board. So are there any comments, corrections, of the minutes of the meeting of August 8th, 2019? I'm gonna go with the assumption that everyone did his homework and read those before the meeting. Unless there is anything, a motion by someone on the Plan Commission to approve those would be in order at this time?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
And is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
Okay, the motion is by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Sizney, to approve the minutes of the meeting of August 8th, 2019. All members of the Plan Commission, if you would vote, if you're in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And then similar action by the Town Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2019.
I will second the motion. So the motion is made by Supervisor Radke, seconded by Supervisor Fisher, to approve the minutes of the meeting of August 8th, 2019. There's no further discussion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously by the Town Board. Item seven, discussion and possible action on a site plan, Plan of Operation Amendment for Blue Heron Girl Scout Camp. The petitioner is Nick. I'm not sure whether you're present, and I guess, why don't you just tell me your last name, rather than me butchering it? How's it pronounced?
Isles.
That's where I was gonna go. All right, Nick Isles. Paradise Builders, the location is S-62W-24528, Town Line Road. The tax key number is WAKT1431999. This is agendized as a discussion by the Town Board and Plan Commission, possible action by the Plan Commission, and then a separate possible action by the Town Board. Thank you all. We'll let you introduce yourselves momentarily, but I think probably first, we'll have a presentation by Planner Malarkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Blue Heron Girl Scout Camp is about 78 acres, parcel on Town Line Road at the south end of the town. You can see it on the overhead above. They, it's currently Zoned P1 Parks District. What's being proposed right now is a building. It's a, it's a shell, part shelter, part storage for, it's, it'd be located in the clearing here, right off this driveway. And the purpose of it is archery training and a pavilion-type shelter, and then a storage area that's associated with it. The total building is 22 feet by 38 feet, 836 square feet in total area. And so, in the town of Waukesha, any building that isn't attributed to single-family or two-family uses requires site plan, Plan of Operation review. And so this park structure does require site plan, Plan of Operation review, and that's why they're here tonight. In terms of zoning requirements, it is P1. The proposed site plan and the building location meets all the requirements of P1 zoning. They have submitted a Plan of Operation, again, which for this building includes archery training, shelter, and indoor storage. The Girl Scout camp would operate from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. Total number of employees is six. There'll be, there's no company vehicles on site. And the starting completion dates for this project would begin immediately and would go through December of this year. In our site plan, Plan of Operation ordinance, we do have architectural requirements. However, they apply, they're sort of two-pronged. The first is for retail, service, multifamily, and office uses. The second is for industrial and warehouse uses, so there's different requirements for those two things. This doesn't really fit into either of those categories, but what is being proposed is for the architecture materials to match the existing building to the south here with the vinyl siding, same colors, same type of asphalt shingled roof. There is an overhead door as part of the building that's being proposed. We do not allow overhead doors to be viewed by the street, if at all possible. This one would not be visible from any public streets, so I don't think that's a concern. We do require landscaping as part of site plan, Plan of Operation ordinances for all new buildings, based on a point system for deciduous and evergreen trees. But since the building is located internally to the camp, it's not visible to surrounding rights of way and properties, and it's primarily an open-air structure, landscaping is not proposed as part of this. There is a provision in the Site Plan, Plan of Operation section that does allow the Plan Commission and Board to permit modifications to the requirements, if determined appropriate to unusual, unique, or existing site conditions. So you may consider that, and the fact that there is no landscaping proposed. No exterior lighting is proposed with the new structure. Waukesha County has also looked at it in terms of if stormwater was needed as a whole for the, for the site, and they did say that does not trigger the requirements of county stormwater permit. There are some wetlands in the site, but they're more than 600 feet from the proposed improvements. So that's all I have for an overview, if the Plan Commission chooses to recommend approval to the Board. I have included a series of conditions, including the existing site plan, Plan of Operation remaining in effect with the additional conditions, the Plan of Operation, as I mentioned, and the prohibition of outdoor storage of materials or equipment. The rest are standard conditions.
Okay, why don't we, at this point in time, wait on each of you, gentlemen, please just introduce yourself and tell us what your relationship is to the project, if you would, please?
I'm Keith. I'm the owner of Paradise Builders, so I'm here just to kind of smooth things through.
Scott McLaughlin. I was the salesman on this project.
I'm Nick Isles. I submit permits for Paradise Builders.
Okay, so you're all with Paradise Builders, representing the Girl Scouts here. Okay, do you have, and we'll have discussion here with the Plan Commission, Town Board in a, in a minute, do you have anything to add to the presentation that Planner Malarkey had? You don't have to feel compelled to say anything, but is there anything that you would like to offer?
Not really. I think he said it well.
Okay, well, he usually does, so that's no surprise. All right, discussion by the members of the Plan Commission or the Town Board on the request.
I just had a comment with the number four, with the landscaping. I'd be all for phasing that out. I'm with that. It's in the middle of nowhere there, and then 78 acres, so we can modify that and take that off if we choose to do so. I'd be all for that.
So you're suggesting no requirements for landscaping?
That's correct.
Okay, and it would, I think it would be good to get the sense of other members of the Plan Commission and Town Board with regard to that same issue. I'm on board with you. Does anybody else have a different perspective? Assuming that's the consensus, if it isn't, speak up, but perhaps that could be incorporated into a motion for approval, if that's appropriate. I don't know that we need to act on that separately. Counselor, can we just move that into the, if we're going to waive any of the landscaping requirements, can that be part of a motion, rather than standing alone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Well, we can ask one more time. If there's not, certainly a motion would be in order, and I think we need to two-step this. Plan Commission would act first. Plan Commission action would be a recommendation, if you're so inclined. And you can put a motion on the floor, and we can continue with discussion. We won't prohibit that.
I make a motion to approve it with the staff recommendations and modify the landscaping.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Fuller, and the motion is to recommend approval to the Town Board, incorporate the conditions that have been set forth in the report by Planner Malarkey, and the motion further includes the requirement that nothing need be done with the landscaping. Does everybody on board or understand, understand what that motion is? Have I stated that correctly? Commissioner White?
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion by the Plan Commission on the motion? If not, if you're prepared to vote, Plan Com, was there discussion? No? Okay. Plan Commission members, if you were prepared to vote, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And now to the Town Board, any further discussion or action on the recommendation from the Plan Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission.
Okay?
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion is by Supervisor Radke, seconded by Supervisor German, to accept the recommendation for approval from the Plan Commission. Unless somebody thinks otherwise, I'll assume we don't need to restate that, since we're going right after it. Is the motion clear to everybody? Okay, any further discussion by the Town Board? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you for attending our meeting tonight. Good luck to you.
Thank you, guys.
Item 10, excuse me, item eight, rather, is notices hereby given that a joint public hearing involving the Town of Waukesha Plan Commission and the Waukesha Town Board will be held on Thursday, September 12th, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM, at the Waukesha Town Hall, located at W-250 S-3567 Center Road. Waukesha, Wisconsin, here proposed rezone for petitioner Sandy Campbell, rezone W-273 S-6201 River Road, tax ID WAKT1420997001 to rezone 11.904 acres from existing A1 agriculture to RE, single-family residence state. I guess, before we go any further, question for Attorney Macy here, and as much as this was noticed to begin at 7:00 PM, would we be advised to hold on this a bit and take a couple of the other agenda items and wait till 7:00 o'clock occurs to proceed with the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, well, then there's another good reason to wait till 7:00, right? Okay. All right, then we'll continue on. So we read that into the, into the record for the minute, but we're gonna step past item eight, and then necessarily nine and 10. I'm assuming no one objects on the Plan Commission or the Town Board. So then we will go to item 11, Comprehensive Land Use Plan, discussion on possible changes to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan in the Sunset Drive area, discussion by the Plan Commission, Town Board. Planner Malarkey, I'm assuming you're going to lead this, are you?
Correct.
Would you just even take a quick, just a real quick minute, and just explain to everybody what the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, if you could just do that in a couple of quick sentences, please?
Sure. The Comprehensive Plan and the Land Use Plan that's associated with it is, is a document that guides future development in the town of Waukesha and every community in the, in the state of Wisconsin. It's, it's the basis for making zoning decisions and land division decisions and similar things like that. And so what the plan does and the map that's associated with it outlines, based on categories of land uses, what, what land uses can go where and what, at what densities. And so that document gets amended from time to time, and we're kind of in the process right now of entertaining a few amendments to the plan, because it hasn't really been looked at comprehensively for a decade or so. And so that's what we're in the process of. We presented a couple of months ago, a draft of the, some of the document language, a map for various areas that we considered discussing for amendment to, to the map itself. And so tonight, we're just, we're here to talk about one specific area, something we haven't talked about before, the area along Sunset Drive in the, in the town, the island, that's sort of mostly a commercial area, industrial area, some residential use, and so that's where we're at tonight.
Okay, thank you. Maybe just even a quick thing. Planner Malarkey's got a, at least one or maybe other projections on the screen. I know some of the folks on the Plan Commission here are kind of in the cheap seats. I don't think that's in our packet, is that correct? But I mean, if any of, if any of you want to step around a bit to view that better, you're welcome to do it. If you're comfortable there, it's okay, but if you want to step around, go ahead. Okay, you want to continue?
Yeah, thank you. And so just, just-
A small scale.
As an overview, this is what the full map looks like. You can see it on the wall, right behind, right behind you there. I mean, that's what our plan looks like. All the colors represent future land use categories, in terms of what can go where, when things get rezoned or divided. And so the area that we're talking about today is sort of in the center of the town. It's this island here on Sunset. And so what the map, the colors on the map represent, the yellow represents low-density residential, which is the, which is the residential category. That's the typical residential category in the town. It requires, you know, anywhere, it's, it roughly coordinates or is a one-to-one ratio with our R1 zoning district, for the most part, which normally requires one-acre lot sizes. The, the red area, north of Sunset and a little bit south of Sunset, is what's called our mixed-use area, and that, that entertains a variety of different uses. It's usually primarily commercial, but it could be some mix of industrial or residential, where it might make sense. And then in the south portion here, it's, it's a little hard to see the colors on the screen, but that's more of a purplish area, and that's our industrial plan category. So that's the three colors that you see on the map. This gray or this light area here, with the black outline, represents area that used to be in the town, but was annexed to the city of Waukesha since the last time the plan was, was done in 2009. So that's just sort of for a reference piece. And so this particular area, it, like I said, it's an island in the town. It's sort of an anomaly. It's, it's cut off by the town of Waukesha, or the city of Waukesha, on all sides. It's a mix of different business uses along Sunset. There is some residential uses, single-family uses on the south side, sort of on both sides of Prairie Avenue. But the houses on Prairie Avenue, that's, there's a few houses here, are planned for mixed use, where currently the houses that are planned, that exist on the west side of Prairie Avenue are planned for residential use. And all of those, those houses on either side of Prairie Avenue face existing commercial uses. So they're, they're looking across the street to, to commercial uses. And one of the things that the town is kind of straddled with is that there are limited locations in the town where there's viable commercial areas. We sort of talked about those a couple of months ago, and there's, there's scattered red areas throughout the town, but there isn't a ton of it that you might see, say, in the city of Waukesha or other areas. So those areas are, are few and far between, and we should protect those as we can for, for the town's economy. And so we didn't, I didn't originally look at this area, but we started to take a closer look at it, so I do have some recommendations and suggestions for this area, and I just wanted to get your feedback, so we can fold it into the plan and kind of keep it moving forward. And we're not making any decisions tonight in terms of the final outcome of this, but as we talk about these areas, or we tweak some of these, or maybe we change some of the mixed-use areas to commercial or something else, I'm just gonna keep the map, keep updating the map, and then when we're, when we're ready, we can hold the public hearings, get full public input on these things, and move forward. So this is the area I'm interested in tonight, and so the areas where I see potential changes on the map are outlined in these, these reddish-pink areas. You can see one here, one here, here and here. And so along Sunset, I am recommending the residences that are on the south side of Sunset to be, instead of planned for continued residential, to change those over to the mixed-use category, similar to the houses east of Prairie Drive. And the reason for that is that, over, over time, there's gonna, there's gonna continue to be development pressure to convert some of those to commercial use. Anybody that owns a home there now and uses it as a residence would have every right to continue to use it as a home. They don't have to change anything at all. But if they wanted to change, or someone came by and they wanted to buy their property, or they wanted to maybe run a business outside, out of their home in that location, they could, they could request a rezoning at the time to, to a business use, because our plan would say it's mixed use, and so we could entertain that rezoning. Without that change to the plan, we couldn't rezone it unless the plan corresponded. So that's how the plan and the zoning sort of work together. Would be no different than the homes that are east of Prairie. The other change that I'd propose to make is there's, there's actually two residential lots at the end of Green Valley Lane that are planned for mixed use now. I'm actually proposing that we change those back to residential use, because they, they kind of, they have less to do with the commercial that's along Sunset and more to do with the, the residential neighborhood to the west. That doesn't mean they couldn't be purchased and consolidated, maybe with the lots up here, but it would take some pretty heavy-duty buffering along the west side to sort of remove them from being part of the neighborhood. So in exchange for these homes being planned for future, for future mixed use, I think this should probably go back to residential, as I think it makes more sense. If you move a little further east, along Industrial Lane, there is a property that's planned for commercial use that kind of dips. It's hard to see, but that is a striped red. So that's a, it's sort of a mixed-use category. I think that's Midwest Plumbing, or at least that's the current owner of the property. And so it's more of an industrial use, anyhow fits into the industrial uses, and again, it, it kind of is an anomaly, a peninsula in that district. So I envision changing that back over to industrial and keeping the rest commercial use. So there's not a lot here to digest, but I, I wanted to get your feedback and just kind of keep the Comprehensive Plan moving and, and at the forefront of discussion as we, as we go forward. Any thoughts? I have an aerial, too, that I can pop up, if that helps kind of visualize the area. Those are the homes here, west of Prairie Avenue, that, again, could be, could go on as residential use, but if someone wanted to change to a business use, they'd have the opportunity to do that, because the comp plan will be changed. Here are the two homes that are at the end of Green Valley Drive that I think should stay residential, because they, they're, they're definitely part of this neighborhood. And then the business here, which I'm saying the category should change from business, or mixed use to, to industrial use.
Okay, just a quick thing even for all of you, the things that Planner Malarkey did project up there, those images are, I think, the very things we do have in our packets, three pieces stapled together. Questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Malarkey, how do you come up with these different areas that should be changed, or what they should be changed to?
Yeah, I mean, there's no real science to it. It's just kind of looking at existing conditions and a feel for the context and surroundings and what's surrounded. And so if you look at these homes, for instance, on Sunset Drive, obviously directly across the street is fairly intensive commercial uses, and so they look at that all day long. And so those residences may be there for the next 10 years, 15 years, I don't know, but these are the types of transition areas that, what's probably likely to happen is someone will come forward and ask for a rezoning in a commercial, because they want to put it in an insurance office in one of those homes, or something similar to that, or someone might propose to buy a couple of them and change it to something else. So again, it's, it's more just logically looking at surrounding context and trying to figure out what's compatible with what.
Do you work with Waukesha County on this, to make these changes?
I will, and they've seen the map so far and our proposed changes, so as I've talked to staff, we sat, we've sat through a meeting with county staff on that. But before we- But before we actually go and, and propose it, the, the public hearing for the town to make changes, I'll, I'll run this past Waukesha County again, sure.
Because I talked to Ben up at Waukesha County, and he pretty much told me that these comprehensive plans like this don't mean anything to Waukesha County.
In what context?
Working with Waukesha County on another property, what it's zoned for and what they want it to be zoned for.
Well, the county's got a comprehensive plan, and the town's got a comprehensive plan, and 95% of the areas they match. And so we try to make them consistent. So when I bring this back to the county, I'm going to say, you know, here's what we're changing, here's what your plan says, and usually they change their plan to match with the county's plan if it, if it makes sense as well. They've done that in the past, uh, for when developers have come forward and does that. So the town, the town has to use their comprehensive plan before they can rezone anything. If, if the rezone isn't consistent with the plan, we can't rezone it. The same holds true for the county. The county can't rezone something or approve a land division and a plat unless it's consistent with their comprehensive plan as well, so.
Well, Waukesha County has the ultimate say on it.
No, not, not for a comprehensive plan, no. For a rezoning, they do, but not for a comprehensive plan change.
That's what I meant for the rezoning.
Other questions, comments? I get just one or two quick ones, and I don't know whether you can answer this Planner Malarkey, but I mean, I, for, for sure, I think the, um, yellow area, the residential area is part of what is commonly referred to as a town island, is all of the commercial and industrial part of it, or if you know part of the town island to them, this is all served by city sewer and water, I think the entire area. Is this all part of the town island that was created in the late, late 1980s, or do you know, or does any-
I, I don't know the year.
Do you know?
It is, yeah.
Administrator Clerk Treasurer Nicholas thinks that it's all part of that same town island, but importantly, it's all served by sewer and water. Do you want to speak?
So this area is, uh, has been approved for sewer and water. Not all properties have sewer and water at the time, at this time, but they, we do have an agreement with the city of Waukesha that, um, all of the properties have access to sewer and water without authorization.
Okay, thank you. Who else? Not, not necessarily for tonight, but one of the things that I, I would like to a little bit see going downstream is, is some further definition, description of what mixed use entails. We've had a little bit of that discussion in the past, and I think that could mean different things to different people in different contexts, so don't need that for tonight, but maybe for future presentations, we ought to, for talking about mixed use as a land use planning category, we ought to try to put a little bit of a definition on it. You can speak to it tonight if you want, but that may be-
Yeah, we, we-
More for future discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely. We do have a definition that I have changed since, uh, the, the plan was last written in 2009, but, uh, I am working on it. It was also noted last time that we should also look at maybe changing some of the mixed-use areas to something else, uh, just to make sure that everything's compatible with, industrial doesn't end up where it doesn't belong and so on. So both of those are on my to-do list.
So that's for another day. Another question over here? Everybody good to go? Did we accomplish what you wanted to do tonight?
Yeah, I mean, if, I just, if there's, if this makes sense in general, I mean, I guess I'll take your silence as meaning that if there's objections to it, or you think I'm going down the wrong path, let me know.
I'm just going to say one thing, I guess. I, I agree with the industrial area that you have as the Midwest Plumbing, right? I agree with changing that. I think that makes sense. The lots, you know, for those two residential lots, that probably should be residential, looks on the map here that they are in subdivision. The mixed use has always been a little problem for me, and I still want to s-
Mm-hmm.
I want, I want a little more definition as to what that really means and what it means to the future development of that area. I mean, I, I'm more to the getting to definitive as far as what we're going to do with that land and what the plan means to, to the town, so.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Last quick thing I've got, and unless somebody else got something where you probably wrap it up, but just even for people who are in the audience or even new to the Plan Commission or, um, watching on YouTube or that type of thing, we are, we are basically, um, required to revisit our land use plan. Is that not correct? At this point in time, it's been in existence roughly for 10 years. This is the piece and part of a, as you showed the overall thing, a much larger, um, project, I mean, which is entirety of the town, and there will be more discussion on this going forward, and our schedule is a little indefinite. I mean, can you help clean that up a little bit? Is that kind of the essence of it?
That, that is the essence of it. Um, and so we don't really have a schedule going forward and, and sort of, there's a lot going on in the town, and this is taking a backseat in, in some ways, but I just wanted to keep it forward so we, as, as things pop up, we discuss them and, and add them to the map, add them to the plan, and then in a, in a few months, it's probably going to be a few months, we'll, we'll bring it back as a whole, hold, you know, hold public hearings, get more input on it and, and wrap it up.
Okay, anything further on this? There's no action required tonight, it's just informational? Um, if not, we'll move on then, and we have passed seven o'clock here so we can go back to item eight, the petitioner here for the rezon, the public hearing. Are all of your folks here yet or not?
Yes.
So you're all in attendance? Okay, then if it works for everybody else, we'll go back to items eight, nine, and 10 on the agenda, after which we'll pick up 13A. I'll read eight in once more. Notice hereby given to the joint public hearing involving the Town of Waukesha Plan Commission and the Waukesha Town Board, held on Thursday, September 12th, 2019, beginning at 7:00 p.m. at the Waukesha Town Hall, located at W-250 S-3567 Center Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin. To hear proposed rezon for petitioner Sandy Campbell, rezon W-273 S-6201 River Road, tax IDW AKT-1420997001 to rezon 11.904 acres from existing A1 agriculture to RE, single-family residential estate. Um, so we will open that public hearing at 7:06 this evening. Do we want to start that with a brief overview from Planner Malarkey? Is that appropriate, Counselor?
Uh, yes, that's generally your best practice.
Okay, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I do, thank you. Um, so, so the total property here, it's, it's located just west of, uh, River Road, County Highway I, at the southwest corner of town. Uh, the Fox River, uh, flows through the property itself. The entire property is about 63 acres, give or take. Um, it's, it's divided into three pieces. It's all essentially one parcel, but there are three components. There's one larger piece, it's about 50 acres west of the Fox River. There's a, there's a small 1.7 acre area north of the Fox River. It's landlocked and it's entirely wet. Uh, and then there's the piece that we're talking about tonight, which is east of the Fox River, and that's a, you know, that's a, that's about an 11 to 12 acre, uh, piece of land. Uh, the whole property is currently zoned, um, A1, with some overlays for environmental corridors, floodplains, high groundwater and so on. There's also county shoreline zoning on the site, which I'll pull up here. Uh, the county zoning layer is, there it is. So all the color that you see on the map is within county shoreline zoning. So the, the portion, and you can see it's zone A1 with some overlays. The portion that's talked about being rezoned tonight is essentially the area here that, that's outside of shoreline zoning east of the Fox River. That's about five acres, uh, uh, I'm sorry, that's about three acres of land or so that's, that's outside of county shoreline zoning. The county's part would, would not be rezoned. So the town, they're requesting a rezoning from A1 to residential estate in the town. In the town, A1 zoning requires a minimum lot size of 20 acres. In the county, A1 requires a minimum lot size of three acres. So they, under county's zoning, they would have the proper district to divide a lot here, because that's the intent, is to basically carve off a lot east of the Fox River. Uh, in the town, though, it does require the rezoning, and residential estate zoning, um, allows for lots as small as three acres. The parcel that's being created, um, it's kind of in two parts. Um, one part is 9.93 acres, that's everything east of the established meander line for the Fox River, and then it's the remainder that's west of the meander line. I should note that on the CSM that you received that was submitted, there was an error. Um, everything west of the meander line was called an outlot, but essentially that's part of the lot itself, so it should be the Lot 1 meander line. Uh, and that, the meander line's espe- essentially established just to, uh, designate the boundaries of the river itself, and it's, it needs to be part of a lot or an outlot. Um, the comprehensive plan for this, this lot, and essentially most of the southwest portion of the town, is, uh, called agricultural, and it is five-plus acres, meaning, uh, the density, the residential development is allowed at densities between three and 35 acres, um, per dwelling unit, or one dwelling unit per five acres is the absolute maximum. And so again, this parcel and most of the areas in the southwest portion of the town fall into this category, and then open lands to be preserved, and those are largely areas with high groundwater and so on. Um, so what's being asked for, um, fits the category of the comprehensive plan, the one dwelling unit per five acres. This lot is essentially, um, uh, almost 12 acres to the Fox River, 9.3 acres east of the meander line, and so it would be eligible to consider to create a lot of that size per, per this district. Um, I do have a note in my staff report in regard to the zoning that says, uh, "I recommend a deed restriction be placed on the property and a note be placed in the CSM stating that no further division of the lots permitted unless consistent with the town comprehensive plan and land use map." Um, I'd actually like to remove that condition. I'm not, I'm no longer recommending that condition because the more I've, I've thought about it, essentially the comprehensive plan is going to guide any future land divisions anyways. If we rezon this portion to residential estate, again, that allows three-acre lots, and they came in for another certified survey map to, to split their lot, their, their 10-plus acre lot to something smaller, we'd be looking at the comprehensive plan anyhow to determine if they could do that. If it stays as, um, agricultural, one unit per five acres, uh, that would guide whether or not there'd be a future division here. So I don't, I don't think that, uh, that note and deed restriction is necessary. I'd point out that, um, all, most of the surrounding land is zoned A1, um, but there are lots, a lot smaller than 20 acres, uh, that's normally acquired for A1. If you go down, um, if you go down west on Point Drive, you can see there's some smaller lots here. Uh, these range, these are all about three acres in size. Um, the lot across the road, uh, is smaller than 20 acres, and then you go a little further northeast on I, uh, there's some other lots that range five to 15 acres in size. Again, those are all zoned A1, basically legal non-conforming uses, but the point I'm going to make is that this is essentially almost carved off as a lot because of the Fox River, but the creation of this approximate 10-acre lot isn't going to be out of the ordinary for some of the surrounding lots, uh, in the area. I do have, I do have comments regarding the certified survey map, but I'll wait at this time to, to, to that agenda item to make those.
Okay, thank you. Why, why don't we invite the petitioner to come forward if you would, and whoever you would like to, to bring forth with you, at least introduce yourselves. We will go ahead with public comments momentarily, but why don't you come forth to the microphone, if you would please, and get up close and personal, introduce yourself to us, please?
My name is Diane Zocheski, and I am not the petitioner, but I am representing him, who is the seller, Mr. Sandy Campbell-
Okay.
And the buyer, Mr. John Seibel. I'm a real estate broker, and I'm representing both parties. And Mr. Campbell is, is not, if I may say it, not very well, so he wanted me to speak on his behalf.
Fair enough. And you're going to spell your last name for us, right?
I will. Z as in zebra, A-K-R, Z as in zebra, E-W-S-K-I.
I'm sure that's just exactly how the Clerk Treasurer had it. Thank you. Okay, do you have, um, anything to add to the presentation that Planner Malarkey just put forth?
I thought he did a fine job to explain it, and I don't have anything to add unless I need to, um, enhance the reason for the sale. I, it, it's very important for Mr. Campbell, so as long as it started, I might as well say it, if, if you're okay with that. Um, Mr. Campbell is in need of, of selling that because he does have a, a wife who is homebound. She's about a month, about a year ago had a stroke, 24/7 care, and he's ran out of money. So if, if we need to support why he is selling this land, it's because we have a willing buyer who's willing to buy, and Mr. Campbell does need to, or would like to, keep his wife in the, in his own home, which is the farm south of that. So I didn't know if I had to say that, but it didn't hurt.
Okay, well, thank you. There may be other questions, but I think at this point in time, we'll open this up to public comments. I mean, typically, in a public hearing, our town ordinances say that the first commenters are those who are in favor of the proposal, followed by those who are opposed. We often kind of break down on those rules a bit, so anybody who would like to come forth, please, to speak, um, at the public hearing, either in favor of or against the proposal, now's your time to come forward, please. And give us your name, address, and get real close to the microphone, please.
Hello, my name's John Seibel. I live at 919 Dana Lane, currently. Um, I have the opportunity, um, in talking with Sandy over the last year, year and a half, to, uh, potentially buy this, uh, piece of property to build a single-family home. It's a beautiful piece of property, it's on the river, and, uh, that's what I would like to do.
Okay, thank you. Spell your last name for us as well, please.
S as in Sam, E-I, B as in Bob, E-L.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing?
Sandy Ham, West 230, South 3827 Milky Way Road. Um, I think everyone knows my general position on these things. Um, I took some notes during the item 11, uh, comprehensive land use plan, and this is going to be coming back over and over again, but, um, I understand the situation here. Um, I was, I learned last week that Wisconsin is the number one state for losing farms. I, I don't know if you can answer my question, but is some of that land farmland?
I, I, well, according to the aerial, it's, it's farm. I'm not sure if it's currently-
I think it's farm. I mean, everything to the west of it used to be farmland, you know, big huge valley of black dirt, and they grew corn and other stuff down there, and now it's all houses. So Planner Malarkey, um, you use the term development pressure, transition areas, and when developers come forward, and I'm, I'm hearing you, but that's not what I want to hear. Um, I understand, I mean, this is taking farmland out of being farmland and turning it into houses, and I'm in favor of keeping as much farmland as we can. It has nothing to do with the people, it has to do with the land in the town. So I'm opposed to it, and if, if someone wants to sell their land, sell it to a farmer. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to speak at the public hearing?
I would again.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, with regards to gentleman's comments, I think it's about 11-point-something acres. Um, a lot of it is environmental corridor, wetlands. There's about three to five acres that, on the hill, that you can actually build on, and it wouldn't be houses, as the gentleman mentioned, it would be a single-family dwelling, one house. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes?
Diane Zocheski, once again. The gentleman mentioned if, to sell it to another farmer. Well, farmer, if a farmer were to buy that, he would buy it at a farmer-type of, um, per acre, and believe me, it wouldn't be very much-
And believe me, it wouldn't be very much. You know, it's, it's something that would not be able to be feasible right now for Mr. Campbell to sell to another farmer because of the difference in price for farmland compared to the anticipated one, single-family home concept here.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Just a note going forward, we will probably close this public hearing forthwith after all the public comment has been made. Item nine will be an opportunity for discussion and possible action on the rezone request, which will involve Plan Commission, the Plan Town Board. That said, I think if they're questions that are simply seeking information at this point in time, Counselor, is that appropriate if somebody wanted to ask those kind of questions, but not, not get involved into the deliberation discussion? But anybody on the Plan Commission or the Town Board who would be seeking information from the petitioner or the planner, this would be the time to ask.
Absolutely, everything has to be in the record. You're correct, Mr. Chairman. If you have questions, if you want information, this is when you have to get it. You have to decide, make your decision based on the information you receive at the public hearing. So we can't call on people to add more stuff later. If you have questions, this is the time to do that.
Attorney Macy, is it also fair to ask questions about the proposed certified survey map at this time? If there's questions about that, because it could potentially influence the decision of the rezoning as well?
Yes, they could.
Did you want to present some information on that as well?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. So they have submitted a certified survey map. It's conceptual at this time. It's fairly detailed because they've actually surveyed it, et cetera. But in terms of our process, it's conceptual. So you'd be providing direction to them going forward during the next agenda item. And, and so anything we provide them would be, is just going to be helpful for them moving forward. The, the points I want to make about the certified survey map is there's a lot of things that are still in flux about it. The county has reviewed it and provided comments. The comments that I've included in my staff report, there's only five of them from the county. They've since updated and provided, it was two days ago, they've provided additional comments. However, they're still preliminary in nature. The big, the big item here from a standpoint of form of the lot and what the lot's going to look like, the county is working with the applicant at this time in terms of some potential land adjacent to the Fox River, whether it's an easement or land that is procured by the county for a type, some type of trail or some kind of access along the Fox River behind the lot. So those questions are, those discussions are taking place. It wouldn't necessarily affect the rezon, but it, it's potential, it would potentially affect the certified survey map. I know they've talked to the county about the, the access point on County Shrunge Highway. There's a, basically what's been said is that they're still formally reviewing it, but the county would allow up to two access points in this location. So it's possible. The county has already gone ahead and told the applicant that the wetland has to be delineated, the environmental corridor has to be delineated. That's been done, but that isn't updated yet on the certified survey map. The same thing with the floodplain, to make sure that the 75-foot setback is maintained from, 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 from wetland locations. I guess that's the gist of the important things I wanted to mention. I'll get into a couple more details when we get to the certified survey map. But I thought you should be aware at least of the wetlands, floodplain, and the potential access on the Fox River for, for a trail.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder to, to everyone, you do have in your pack, it's a letter dated August 28, 2019, from Engineer Chris Giannelli of Royford Melkey that speaks to the issue of the CSM review. And again, we may dive into that deeper at Item Number 10. But I think it's worthy of at least noting the existence of that at this point in time. He's not here this evening to present that or speak to it directly. But if that prompts any questions or comments, you can bring them forth now or bring them forth when we get to Item Number 10. Go.
I just have a comment. And this goes to the seller. I just want to ask if he was aware of what the Washington County comments were up to this point? That you're aware of what they may or may not want access point or a trail or not on your, on your next year property?
If I may again represent the seller, which he asks me to. Yes, we are aware, we're working closely with the county with respect to their desires. And in fact, next week sometime, we will have a walkthrough with one of the county's representatives to see if there's some amicable idea that both the potential buyer and the county could come up with to satisfy the trail situation. Nothing is done yet, but we're working very closely with the county on that situation.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments from the public or? Okay.
I think everybody up here understands the situation and the desires of people. And, you know, I've been here 68 years and, you know, the developmental pressure, as you mentioned, it's, it's real. You need to make it up. And, and so, yeah, I mean, whether it's Carol Smart taking her land out of farm and moving it into the city and putting in condominiums or whatever it is. And of course, they can get more money for it if they, you know, sell it as R1 or A1 or whatever. You know, I'm just opposed to it and I'm in favor of the status quo. So I think you all know that by now, but I just, you know, wanted to repeat that. And I know where that land is and I'd love to see it stay the way it is. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. Okay, last opportunity for anyone to speak or anybody on the Plan Commission, the Town Board to seek out information or get questions answered.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go.
So Planner Malarkey, the entire nine, let's call it 10 acres, is going to be, they're seeking to zone that entire triangle to RE?
No, and let me explain why that's not the case. So again, this is the county shoreline zoning. The town's portion is this remnant. So only this, this piece that's outside of the county's bubble would be zoned from A1 to RE.
Okay.
The county's A1 already allows lots of smalls, three acres. RE1 does not, RE1 is minimum 20, and that's why they're rezoning to RE. If there was a, if there was a zoning district that the town had that allowed 10-acre lots, we'd rezon to that. But there's, there's nothing between the three-acre and the 20-acre lot size.
So we would have one lot with two different zonings in it?
Correct, which happens all over the place in the, in the, in the town.
Can you give me another example?
Well, our, our, our industrial is, is I1 and the county's is M1.
But this would have two different town zones, right?
No, only one town zone.
So the entire 10 acres would be RE from a town point of view?
So the only thing the town has jurisdiction over is this area outside of the county's bubble, right? This, this, this land here.
Right.
Okay? So that's all that's getting rezoned. So this piece would be RE, this piece remains A1.
I understand that the county has jurisdiction from a shoreline point of view for what's remaining A1. But from a town point of view, how would that land to the west of the meander line be considered from a town zoning point of view?
Town has no zoning there, zero.
Okay, thank you. I guess that's, that's not the answer I expected.
And this, this isn't, and just for clarification, this isn't the meander line, it's just a buffer off of the Fox River. The meander line's on the certified survey map, but that's, that's just a way to designate sort of a boundary for the Fox River on the, on the certified survey map. It's still part of the lot.
Proposed Lot 1, net 2. Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Then, back to your comment about the, I recommend a deed restriction be placed. And I understand that you're reconsidering that and recommending that it be removed. But it caught my attention when I read your report and I had a couple of questions about it. So the property should not be allowed to be re-divided without change to the town land use plan map. The town does not have another zoning district that would allow a larger, a lot larger than three acres. Therefore, I recommend a deed restriction to be placed on the property and a note be placed in the CSM further, stating that no further division of the lot be permitted unless consistent with the town comprehensive plan. So given all of that, why would we do this if the current land use plan has it designated as agricultural?
Because agriculture allows, allows densities from, starting at one unit per five acres up to one unit to 35 acres. So it gives you some flexibility in terms of what you allow based on context. But it allows, it allows one unit per five acres at a maximum density, whether it's ag or not. It allows you to create those lots. And so that's what the category says. You don't have to approve this rezon. If you feel this location for a home here doesn't make sense based on context, you could say, no, we think this is more of a one unit per 35-acre area, not a one unit per five-acre area. But that ag designation in the, in the land use plan is, is ag and residential uses. We allow densities up to one unit per five acre. And so the point about the deed restriction, it's not necessary because once this lot is created, and, and so they have more than five acres here, right? So they can do, they could ask for this, you don't have to approve it, but they could ask for this rezoning because they have almost 12 acres here, 11-some acres. So it obviously exceeds the one unit per five acres. It's one unit per 12 acres here is what they're really providing. And so if they, if, it doesn't sound like the, the future property owner plans to re-divide it, but if he wanted to, he could come forward and ask for it again.
Because he has enough land for the one to five acres?
Potentially, but you may say at the time, no, you got your division. Doesn't make any sense, given the fact where your home's placed, where the, the vast majority of the property is wet, floodplain, et cetera, et cetera. It doesn't make sense from an access point. This is, this is enough because we're not guaranteeing one unit per five acres. It's just a, it's a range, one per five to one per 35.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all that I had at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Dor. Who else? We're kind of getting down to last chance. We're going to close the public hearing shortly if there are no other questions, no other people desire to speak. Okay, then if that's it, I will declare the public hearing closed. And we'll move on to Item Number 9, which is discussion and possible action on Sandy Campbell's request to rezon W273S 6201 River Road Tax IDW AKT 1420997001 from existing A1 agriculture to RE single-family residence estate. And the three subparts, A is discussion by the Plan Commission and Town Board, then possible action by the Plan Commission, which would be a recommendation, and possible action by the Town Board. So at this point in time, all members of Plan Commission and Town Board can participate in the discussion. Who seeks recognition? That quieted the room, didn't it?
I'll get a shot at it then.
Go ahead.
I just comment. Unique situation with the river, the shoreline and Highway I, the little triangle that, that's there. And the petitioner has some land available to sell, which is obviously his. And I think he should have the right to do what he wants to do. I would love to have it stay farmland, but we know that's inevitable, someday change. I'm in favor of amending it to R1, so district, so.
RE.
RE.
I'm sorry, RE.
So you're in favor of the rezon request? Okay, who else?
I guess I have mixed emotions about this. I do farm, so I mean, I can understand what Mr. Ham has said. But I also understand the situation that the seller's in. It is their land, they do have a right to do what they feel is best for it. They hit the nail on the head exactly with farmland value and development prices are so far apart. And that always restricts farmers from being able to buy land. So I, I have mixed emotions about doing this, but I do understand the landowner's rights. And this is what's been going on in the town for years. So I guess I would have to say I would support it.
Who else? I will listen to the rest of the discussion, but I'm likely to support the rezoning. As a practical matter, it's constrained by the river and by the road, neither one of which is, is going to move. So it's not contiguous with any other properties. So I'm certainly sympathetic to the issue to maintain the agricultural land. But at the end of the day here, I am most likely to support the request. Who else would like to speak? Anybody who wants to talk, you're welcome to. We don't need to belabor this and want to cut it short. But if there is any will to act on this by a member of Plan Commission, you can certainly put a motion in at any point in time. Well, so we can move the discussion along, I will move on behalf of the Plan Commission to recommend the rezoning of W273S 6201 River Road Tax IDW AKT 1420997001 from existing A1 agriculture to RE single-family residence estate. And it would be a recommendation for approval to the Town Board. And it would incorporate the conditions that are included in the staff recommendation that was prepared by Planner Malarkey on Page 3 of his staff review report. And I so move.
I'll second that.
Okay, opportunity for further discussion. Just a quick clarification, I think we've been through this enough, Sean. But the staff recommendations that you put forth there, the recommendations that we referred to that are part of the motion, did not include the recommendation about the deed restriction. Is that correct? That was in the body of the report, but not in your staff recommendation per se?
It's true, but the, the motion we're talking about right now is just the rezoning. And that was a, that was a CSM.
Fair enough.
Item.
Okay, okay. So bring that back up. Who else would like to weigh in? There's nothing further since the Plan Commission. Members are ready to vote. Does everyone, does everybody understand the motion, which is to recommend approval to the Town Board? Okay, then all in favor of the Plan Commission, in favor of the motion, you can get by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the recommendation been put forth by the Plan Commission. And now goes to the Town Board on Item 9C.
I'll make the recommendation to accept, excuse me, I'll make the motion to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission on the rezon of W273 South 6201 River Road with the staff recommendations as outlined on Page 3 of the report.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Dor, second by Supervisor German to accept the recommendation of approval for the rezon. The recommendation came forth from the Plan Commission. Further discussion with the Town Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add also, it doesn't really make me happy that if the county's going to try to hold this up in any way to get a walk path through on their land. So I'd like to actually be in contact with them, see if that's one of their contingencies. I'd like to actually be in contact with them, see if that's one of their contingencies, if we can be notified which way this goes, once it comes to county.
Well, it's, it's, it's certainly going to come back to us, so this is just a concept. The CSM is a concept, the Certified Survey Map, so it's going to come back one more time, so we'll see what their exact requirements are going to be next month when it comes forward again.
Does that satisfy your concern at this time?
Yes.
Okay, further discussion by the Town Board. If not, we won't belabor. Everyone understands the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously as well. Item ten is discussion and possible action on Sandy Campbell's request for conceptual certified survey map on the property located at W-273-S South 6201 River Road Tax IDW AKT 142099701. Again, discussion by the Plan Commission and the Town Board, and then possible action by the Plan Commission, possible action by the Town Board. We've stepped into this pretty far already. Is there more that you would like to present, Planner Malarkey?
I would just add a couple more things. So most of the Rooker-Milkey's report, Christianelli's report is technical in nature. The county has provided some comments. I touched on the fact that they'd like a walking path and some access on the Fox River. That's a work in progress. I mentioned the fact that the out lot one meander line is actually the lot one meander line. The one, I guess the one thing I want to touch on in, in Engineer Giannelli's report is the fact that our ordinance requires remnant parcels, so this is a, this is a chunk of land that's taken off of the larger sixty-three acre parcel, and so our land division ordinance requires the whole thing be surveyed, not just the small parcel, except if it's twenty acres or greater, the, it can be waived. And so, the county, the, some of the, the county has the same co, the requirements in their ordinance, and they are, they are entertaining a waiver for this particular property. Christianelli mentioned that if a waiver should be granted for this, and you wouldn't have to grant the waiver tonight because this is coming back in final form, and they'll request the waiver at that time, but that a note be added to the CSM which says that this parcel is part of a larger parcel and subject to the definition of a subdivision per chapter twenty-nine of the Town of Waukesha Code of Ordinances, so that this parcel doesn't get lost along the way, and, you know, further redivisions where it exceeds more than five per five years kicks in the subdivision versus the certified survey map requirement. So you don't have to grant the waiver, but if you do, that, that's an important note to add.
Is that what Attorney, Attorney Engineer Giannelli was addressing? Is that items eight or eight and nine on his letter?
Eight, nine, that's correct.
Okay.
The rest of his letter is technical comments.
All right. And maybe if we get to a point of a motion on that, maybe you can even help us clean up just a little bit of that language when we get there in terms of.
I, I don't even know if there's a motion that needs to be made. It's just a concept, it's just discussion. You've seen it, because we wanted to show you as part of the rezoning request, and so the property's already been rezoned. I've, I give some indication that you'd be favorable to the creation of a lot.
Sure.
On this, so you can provide whatever direction you want.
So as long as this is, and this is importantly, agenda is, it's a conceptual review, so what you're saying, we'll get another kick at some of those issues downstream?
Right. So hopefully, his report, the county's comments, a couple of my comments, they will incorporate those into the new CSM, and it'll come back one last time.
Okay. Everybody understand where we're at? If there is no discussion, a motion for recommendation to the Plan Commission from, to the Town Board from the Plan Commission would be in order at this time on agenda item ten B. I'm sorry, what? We're not going to take a motion on the conceptual approval, is that what we're saying?
No, 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 no formal action, just if you have, they, they have our comments, if you have any additional comments to give them.
All right. So we leave it informal and no action?
Right.
Okay. So, any other further comments? If not, we can move along. All right, very good then. As we mentioned, we're going to ask just the Plan Commissioners to hold tight for a couple of minutes because we're going to go to item thirteen A instead of adjourning the Plan Commission. And thirteen A is noticed as follows, notices hereby given at a joint public hearing involving the Town of Waukesha Plan Commission, the Waukesha Town Board, and we'll correct that. Simply to say a public hearing involving the Waukesha Town Board will be held on Thursday, September twelfth, two thousand nineteen, beginning at six thirty PM. We've passed that by, but we're okay. At the Waukesha Town Hall located at W-250 S-3567 Center Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, per section sixty point seven one, paragraph four of Wisconsin State Statutes for the creation of Waukesha Sanitary District Number One, known as the Town Hall Parcel Tax IDW AKT So we will open the public hearing at this point in time. Administrator Nicholas either you and or Attorney Macy, do you want to just give a little context to what this is about, please?
You want to go ahead and give it a start?
I, whatever you want. It's a very simple procedure when we own the land to create the sanitary district. Many of us, many municipal attorneys believe that sewer service cannot be provided by a town. That's pretty well accepted, and that's the reason why sanitary districts or utility districts are created in order to do the processing and the handling of providing sewer service. Now, this is not the only area that we have sewer service, but we need at least one sanitary district for reasons probably others will speak on. I'm just here on the legal aspects. It's always been our firm's position, and I think most municipal attorneys, that at the time the sewer service was made available to the town, the district should have been created, because districts coordinate sewer service, not townships, and that's just the laws in the state of Wisconsin. So that's the legal reason for creating it.
So, to create a, a sanitary district, the first thing that has to be done is, a petition has to be signed. Chairman Fisher signed that petition for a sanitary district on August thirteenth. But the petition was accepted by the Town Board at their August twenty-second meeting. Requirement is to have a ten thousand dollar bond, was in possession by the clerk on August twenty-eighth as required by statute thirty, sixty dash seven one sub three. Public hearing notices were sent to the Freeman and published on August twenty-ninth and September fifth in compliance with statute sixty point seventy-one sub four. The Town Board followed the public hearing, following this public hearing, has thirty days to write a decision order, and then the Town Board would, at the, at another meeting, order or declare the boundary for the district. Once you do that, then the next step is to just file it with the DNR and the County Register of Deeds.
Okay, thank you. So the public hearing has been opened. Anyone who would like to speak, please come forth.
I think, to the best of my knowledge, all five of the Town Board members are on board with this process. It's in line with my earlier comments, to protect, in the same vein, to protect the town land, and as was mentioned earlier, the developmental pressure, the transition areas, and when developers come forward, this is an effort to kind of protect the town from those things, or at least be in control of them, and I totally support the plan, and I, I hope you proceed with it post haste. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Again, as before, I think anybody on the Town Board, if you have any questions or seeking any further information about this, now would be the time to bring those questions forth? Or anybody else from the public? I see we have but three in the audience and four in total. You're all welcome to speak. All right, if there's nothing further, then I will declare the public hearing closed, and I think as was indicated, there'll be no action taken on that, simply closing the hearing tonight, correct? Okay, then, which you've all been waiting for, we can go back to what was item twelve, adjournment of the Plan Commission. We thank you for staying with us, but a motion to adjourn the Plan Commission meeting would be in order at this time. Okay, is there a second to the motion to adjourn the Plan Commission meeting? Motion by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Sizney to adjourn the meeting, adjourn the Plan Commission meeting. All Plan Commissioners in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So we are adjourned at seven fifty PM with the Plan Commission meeting. Any need for anybody to take a comfort, thank you, Plan Commissioner, anybody need to take a comfort stop along the way, or you just want to keep going? Supervisor Radke says roll it, right?
Keep going.
All right. Okay, thank you very much, folks. Thirteen B under business is discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty nineteen dash R dash seven to amend the operating budget by increasing revenue from general fund balance of fifty thousand dollars and increasing expenses for long-range planning to protect town borders, including boundary agreements, and the potential for incorporation in the same amount. This amendment will reduce the general fund balance cash by fifty thousand dollars. Again, I think the agenda item describes fairly well what the purpose of it is. Do you want to add anything more to that at this time? Does everybody understand what this is about? You've got actual copy of that resolution in your packet? Any discussion? If not, a motion would be in order to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash R dash seven?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to amend ordinance twenty nineteen da, R dash seven, amend the operating budget by increasing the revenue funds balance of fifty thousand dollars, increase expenses.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Item thirteen C, discussion and possible action on operator license application for Shelley Fahy, F-A-H-E-Y, working at Telly's Tap and Eatery, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the operator license for Shelley Fahy.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? Motion by Supervisor Radke, seconded by Supervisor German to approve the operator license application for Shelley Fahy. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Discussion and, thirteen D is discussion and possible action on temporary sign request located on the corner of Sunset and Highway TT for petitioner Jeff Benozian. I believe this item is going to be tabled tonight. I will make a motion to do that forthwith, but I think Administrator Nicholas, do you want to just explain what this is about quickly?
So, Mr. Benozian wants to put a sign on the corner, a temporary sign on the corner of Sunset and Merrill Hills Road during the, with the change in the bypass is the reasoning. This was put on as a Town Board agenda item, but being that it's a temporary off-site sign, it needs to go to Plan Commission, so it has been, we're, I'm requesting it to be tabled to the October tenth meeting.
So it's a procedural item. I will move to table item thirteen D and put it on the agenda for the meeting on October tenth. I so move to table.
I'll second.
Okay, that's non-debatable. Motion has been made and seconded by Chairman Fisher and Supervisor Radke respectively to table item thirteen D and to bring it back on the agenda on October tenth. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Thirteen E, discussion and possible action on twenty twenty dash twenty-four capital project plan. Just a real quick comments, and we can dive into it. You've got a document for a place to start on that in your packet in front of you. I think Administrator Nicholas and I have had the discussion on that. This has to be acted upon by the Town Board by not later than the meeting on the twenty-sixth of September, two weeks from now. So she's, has an opportunity, and we do as a board to put budgets together, both capital budgets and operating budgets, and make the deadlines for publishing those things, have an opportunity to discuss it. So tonight, it's on the agenda. This can be discussed. I mean, there's three things we can do. We can discuss it, and we can act on it. We can discuss it, or we can simply neither discuss it nor act on it, and take it up on the twenty-sixth of September at the next meeting. So that's the prerogative of the entire board as to what you want to do tonight. What you have in front of you while you're pondering that, the way this is put together, because there are a lot of elements to this and a lot of things that are certainly have the potential to be changed, what you're looking at actually includes two thousand and nineteen, and this simply shows strike throughs on that at this point in time because those are either projects that have been completed in two thousand and nineteen, or will be completed, or will not be undertaken. So just, so people can kind of track and see where things are at in this suggested plan, and this is just a suggestion, that's why two thousand and nineteen appears. I mean, Kathy, correct me, but I mean, the document, when we actually approve the capital project plan, that'll drop two thousand and nineteen off, so that's just to kind of give you some informational direction. And you got color on it that which appears in red, and Kathy's got those numbered up. If you look at the project ID number, they're numbered two thousand and nineteen, one through, what's the last number we got on there? One through fifteen. So those are things that are possible adds which didn't appear previously in the two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-four cap, or twenty-three capital plan.
Question?
Yes, sir.
What is the plan for the plow trucks between now and twenty twenty-two or whatever, or later? I mean, we've had an urgency there that they can't be parked outside with the salt, and we're going to leave them outside all this time, or what's the plan here?
So you're talking about what to, what to do with that equipment?
Yes.
One possibility, and I mean, this capital plan speaks an awful lot to something we're going to talk more about, vision for the future of it. What this envisions is the construction in two thousand and twenty-two of a new fire station on, this is listed as state highway, state trunk highway one sixty-four. That's the twenty nineteen dash four. That's the properties that are listed on, as twenty nineteen dash one and twenty nineteen dash two, which actually have addresses on Big Bend Road. If the acquisition of those were to go forward, which would require Town Elector approval, so there's a lot of ifs there, but part of the vision of this is that the fire station would be constructed on that newly acquired property, and if that were the case, the fire station would be vacated here. The scenario for this would be to let the Public Works Department occupy the fire station quarters until such time as new Public Works building is constructed over on those new properties. I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities for this, at least from my perspective, that we're kind of looking through the window of it. This could involve a borrowing, so that new facilities were built all at the same time on a new property. There's just a whole host of possibilities that end up being both short-term and long-term, or short-term and, short-range and long-range visions. So, I mean, this is, there's a lot of moving parts. It's a lot of fluid pieces. I mean, there's certainly the possibility to construct a new Public Works building on the new property and leave the fire station here. That doesn't solve the issue of living quarters, so I mean, there's a lot of pieces and parts that, I don't want to jump ahead on this, but if you look down the agenda a bit, I'm asking for us to have a, we can certainly talk about it now, but to have a discussion committee of the whole at our next meeting in two weeks, visions for the future of the town of Waukesha. I mean, there's all kinds of different options that could be pursued, and I think we need to be realistic and say, some of this long-range visioning stuff, we may very well be putting plans in place that those of us who are members of the Town Board now, not all of us, maybe none of us, will be members of this Town Board to see any of those things through fruition. I mean, that's just a reality. Did everything but answer your question, right?
No, no, I guess, I'm sorry. Yeah, that kind of put things in perspective. I guess I was just wondering how this is all going to work out, short term, but that does answer that question, if that's flexible.
I mean, just last thing, and let other people jump in, the reality of it is, what you see before you tonight are collectively, our town of Waukesha appetite is bigger than our pocketbook at this point in time, and we talked about that before when we looked at revenue stream. There's going to have to be prioritization, look at funding and that type of thing. I mean, that's a simple, that's a simple reality of where we're at.
From my point of view, there's an awful lot on here that has never even been reviewed or part of the capital plan. There's items on here that, I don't know, I've been taken to school a number of times about my lack of support for the building additions on this current property, and it turns out that all of a sudden, that whole plan has been scrapped according to this capital plan. I've been taken to school on the fact that the capital plan changes from year to year, and it should hardly change at all, and all of a sudden, I see in this capital plan here $350,000 of land purchases that has never been discussed, and fire stations on Highway 164. It almost seems like it's a capital plan where we're flying by the seat of our pants.
I guess my response would be, there's probably a lot to agree with on what you said, but, and we're going to get downstream to a bit, I'm going to absolutely encourage every one of you to come forth in two weeks and put forth your vision for the future of the town of Waukesha. So I mean, you can bring some of that forth tonight if you want, but we need to have a discussion, and there needs to be a very frank and open discussion, and a lot of merit to some of the things you say, but you need to bring that forth then in two weeks.
Madam Clerk, or Administrator, do you know the approximate balance in the capital plan at this time? In the capital fund, excuse me?
I don't know.
Okay. Or what you anticipated to be at the end of the year?
I don't.
Okay, that's fine.
We're not there yet.
I understand.
You could look back at those documents Supervisor Dur that put together, and we looked at, I don't know, some of that back in July.
I can take care of that.
Where we did, looked at revenue stream type of thing. That was part of the purpose for that, and I think that would give you some insight, because that was premised on cash that we had in hand, and I worked with Administrator Nicholas on that, the point in time that was put forth, and then that projected additional expenditures through the rest of the year. So that could be visited.
I'm good.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd plan on living in the town for a long time yet, and I'd like to see the town survive. To be honest with you, there are a lot of things up in there right now, but I would make a motion to approve this capital project plan, so we can start moving forward with a few things.
Okay, I will second it, at least for discussion purposes.
I guess for further discussion, I don't even envision how I could support a capital plan at this point. That looks, I mean, this was just rolled out to us when the packet was published on last Friday. I mean, I look down here, and I look at a ditch mower in three more years, when the town has again taken on the responsibility of ditch mowing. I know from my past work with the DPW that the ditch mower that we have is barely functional at all. I think the housing of the vehicles that Supervisor Stigler brought up is a significant There's cutbacks in roads that I'm not comfortable with. All of a sudden, we don't need an ambulance for another two years. All of a sudden, we don't need a fire engine for another four years. There's just all of a sudden, a lot of magical stuff that I've been told for the last five, six years, that absolutely, positively had to be done. We can't do without it. We're lacking certifications. The world is going to come to an end, and now all of a sudden, we push them out, and everybody's just fine for it, and we have a motion on the table to accept the capital plan? I could never support that.
Well, this has been in a discussion for the past three months, this capital plan.
Not in this format, and in this, not in everything that's on this. That's not true. That's not a true statement.
Okay, well, let's go at it this way, and I understand, appreciate where you're coming from Supervisor Dur. Let's go back to where I started. We need to adopt a capital project plan so we can move forward, and it really is imperative that we do that at the meeting on the 26th. Do you think you'll be prepared at that point in time to share your vision and make some decisions?
We'll see what it looks like on the 26th. You're perfect, I mean, there's a motion on the table. It was motion and discussion, that's my discussion. It's my opinion, that's all.
Well, I appreciate that, but all I'm saying is, we've, good, bad, or indifferent, we're going to have to find a way to move forward. Kathy, do you want to just speak a bit to the urgency of doing some of these things in a timely manner? I mean, we have got a date certain, I believe it's November 5th, to establish, have the electorate basically vote on the tax levy. We've got to have a budget that's match it and everything, and I mean, we're sitting in the middle of September. Why don't you speak to that for a minute?
So we have to, our process is, we have to get the capital project passed, so then I can put together a capital budget that addresses that before I can start on our operating budget. All of those things need to be completed by October 14th, in order for me to get the information to the Freeman to make our November 5th budget meeting that was approved at our annual meeting.
I'm open to suggestions, I guess, if you, the amount of time you think we need to have to discuss this, if you want to try to have a special meeting between now and then. I think, at a minimum, on the 26th, I'm assuming they might be here, but I think we ought to require Chief Buchholz and DPW Director Nolte to be here, so questions could be asked of them. I mean, how do you want to proceed so we can get this done in a timely manner? And again, I would just tell you that I believe, compared to past years, I think it should be done in public. I don't, and I think it should be done in this very room. I don't care so much about how much time we want to spend on, or when we want to do it, but we've got to get this done by the 26th of September.
Well, I think in the past, it's been done in the public through workshops that some people in this room, and the chief attended, and a few others from the public attended, that started months and months and months ago.
All right. Do you want a workshop? Suggest it. I mean, come up with something constructive, Mike.
Whatever you'd like to do. The chairman scheduled a workshop, if the workshop is the direction you want to go.
I'm deferring to you.
There's a motion on the table for this capital project plan, and I was simply stating that I wouldn't be able to support this capital project plan, that's all.
I understand, and all I'm telling.
I don't want to be argumentative here, that, those were the end of my comments.
I'm not either, but all I'm telling you is, at this point in time, this is going to be set up, it's going to be on the agenda for the 26th of September.
All right.
To be sure, and whatever you think you want or need to do, I'm open to suggestion on that. If you want to discuss all of it at that meeting at that point in time, if you want to do that as part of a committee of the whole, you want to do it part of the business thing, if you want to have a workshop between now and then, pick a special date for it, I'm open to suggestion. My only point is, we're going to have to cut bait. It's just that simple.
Well, there's nothing simple about it. We're talking about $5 to $7 million over the next five years?
Well, but in fairness, this type of stuff, we've been talking about this for several months now, and I know there's moving pieces and parts, but I mean, I put a lot of time and effort into putting together a income and expense revenue stream. You've got all of that stuff, we've had that for months, to look at different variations of that, because this board has never even looked at the revenue stream side of it. So we've been going on this for a number of months. I mean, we have no choice but to act on approving budgets and budget levy and stuff the 5th of November. I mean, Clerk, Treasurer, Administrator Nicholas just went through that. We don't have other alternatives.
Well, I'd suggest we do a workshop. I would agree, I can't support this capital plan as it is. I certainly don't support, and I've said it in the past, the land purchase, to go from a six-acre parcel that we have here to a four-acre parcel, and I certainly can't support what's now a $2.4 million firehouse, plus $120,000 on there, when we were at $800,000 last year. The way this sits, there's no way I could support that.
All right.
Again, I'd suggest the workshop.
Okay.
To at least get through some of those hurdles.
Sure. Go ahead.
So if you're considering a workshop next week, on the 29th, we have a meeting already here for a public hearing.
19th.
The 19th. For the cooperative boundary agreement, we have a public hearing. If you'd like, we could work after the public hearing, we could work on workshop.
Right after that.
I could notice that.
That would make sense to me.
Does that work for everybody? Basically, you have a workshop in this room, public workshop, on the 19th, following the cooperative agreement, public hearing with the town of Brookfield? And if you would, ask Director Nolte and Fire Chief Buchholz to be here?
I guess, what, this workshop, we could have had it two months ago.
Looking good.
And what happens if we don't come to an agreement on 26th?
Well, we will come to an agreement, because motions will be put forth, and we will come to an agreement. We have no alternative.
I believe the words last year was that it wasn't the Town Board's finest hour. I believe those were the words used.
Well, I think someone, a lot of us could agree on this. Town Board in the past hasn't hit a lot of finest hours. We're going to try to do better, but.
I would disagree with that.
Well, all right. Are you in favor of having the workshop in a week from now, Mike?
That's fine.
All right, good, so then let's go with it that way.
Schedule it. I can make it, I'll be there.
You don't know whether you can be there?
I have my full schedule with me, but if we have.
Well, are you coming to the cooperative hearing?
If we have the public hearing, that's on my calendar, so I imagine I'll be able to make it.
Yes, we are having the hearing with Brookfield.
I said, if we're having the pub, never mind.
All right.
This has become counterproductive.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, indicate by saying nay. Nay. Did you vote?
I didn't, because your second was kind of the same. I'm opposed to that, so.
What? You lost me.
Was there a second? I'm sorry, was there a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
So are you voting or not?
The way it was worded was, maybe I didn't understand it.
The motion was to approve this capital plan. Supervisor German made it, I seconded it, and now we're voting on whether to approve this or not.
And I don't approve it.
So are you voting nay?
Yes.
All right, so then the way I've got it, Supervisor German voted aye, Supervisor Stigler, Dur, Radke, and Chairman Fisher voted nay. Is that correct?
I believe so.
All right, very good. So we'll take that up from there. Announcements, then, we can move right into that. Meetings of the Committee of the Whole, tentative schedule for that. Two weeks from now, September 26, 2019, at 6:30 PM. Topic will be visions for the future of the town of Waukesha. That'll be a week downstream from our workshop on the capital plan. Capital plan will be on the agenda for action that evening, so I would encourage all of you, that's going to be limited to a half hour, but get your vision and shape it and bring it forth at that point in time. Okay? October 24th at 6:30 PM, and again, that's the meeting that doesn't involve the Plan Commission, put on here for Committee of the Whole discussion, will be maintenance of town rights of way, we've got a lot of work to do in that area. 14B, and I asked Kathy to put this on here, because we want to make sure the public is fully aware of that. There will be three public hearings on the proposed cooperative plans between the town of Waukesha and other municipalities, and as you recall, this is an element of our attempt to incorporate the town of Waukesha into a village. So the first meeting will be on September 19th, a week from tonight, at 6:30 PM. It will be a joint meeting with the Town Board of the town of Brookfield and our Town Board, and it will be in this very room, after which, we said, and Kathy will get that notice, we'll go ahead with our capital plan workshop as soon as that is completed on September 30th at 2019 at 6:30 PM. Again, it'll be our meeting jointly with the Town of Vernon Town Board for a public hearing. That'll be here at the town of Waukesha, and that'll be the cooperative, proposed cooperative plan with the town of Vernon. And on October 8th at 6:30 PM, the same thing will occur here with the Town Board of the town of McQuanago, to discuss the proposed cooperative plan between the town of Waukesha and the town of McQuanago. And those are all required by the statute that we are following and so forth. We are obliged, correct, Counselor, to hold those public hearings.
Yes, sir.
So that's baked in. Item 15, announced closed session. You are hereby notified that the Town Board of the town of Waukesha will convene and may upon motion duly made and seconded and acted upon by roll call vote as required under Wisconsin Stat 1985-1E. Going to closed session during the course of the meeting. The Town Board members may attend the closed session. The purpose of closed session will be as follows: to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, specifically to discuss boundary protection and purchase of public property. Is there a motion to go into closed session at this time?
I'll make a motion, we go into closed session.
Is there a second? I will second the motion to go into closed sessions, so the motion by Supervisor German, seconded by Chairman Fisher, to go into closed session. Roll call vote, please.
Any discussion? Sure. Just again, acknowledging the hard work of Mr. Hahn from several weeks ago, I believe this would be closed session number seven since the turn of the new board.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Chairman Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor German?
Aye.
Supervisor Radke?
Aye.
Supervisor Dur?
Aye.
And Supervisor. And Supervisor Stigler?
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session at eight twenty P M.